It's like New Year's countdown.
Welcome to the January 22nd, 2020 School Board Meeting for Pickle City Schools. Mr. Hiddle, roll call, please.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first over here, we have approval of the minutes of the January 9th organizational meeting. Hopefully, everybody's got a chance to review that. Any comments, questions? Approval of the agenda?
We need a motion.
May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Okay.
Second.
Okay, all signify by saying aye if in agreement.
Aye.
Okay. And also the approval of the agenda for tonight. Everybody had a chance to look it over. Any questions, comments, or anything? Okay, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And I'll hopefully signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a guest this evening to give out a special award. Mr. Joe Braden from the State Auditor's Office is here.
I've got all these positive faces.
Well, it's great to be here again on behalf of Auditor State, Keith Faber. We were here just a couple of months ago, brought the auditor with us and got a chance to check out your new facility here. We had a real good time. But it's great to be back again to honor you all in this very select group. As you all know, the Auditor State's Office audits nearly 5,900 entities and only about 4% of the entities are even eligible for this award. This award's presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a clean audit report. The criteria has been tweaked just a little bit, so I always like to read through it so you know what everybody had to do to make this happen. So let me read through it. The entity must file a financial report with the Auditor State's Office by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. The audit report must not contain any findings for recovery, any material citations or material weaknesses, any significant deficiencies, any uniform guidance, single audit findings, or any questioned costs. The entity's management letter must contain no comments related to ethics referrals, lack of timely annual financial report submission, any questioned costs, any bank reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, any findings for recovery, or any public meetings or public records issues. And they shall have, the entity shall have no other financial concerns. This award represents the hard work of all the school employees here who make an effort each day to achieve accounting excellence. I want to recognize the school board members here and the superintendent who have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar here in the Pickle City School District. But I specifically would like to recognize Jeremy, if he'd like to step up here, Jeremy Hiddle, your treasurer, for his exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. Congratulations, Jeremy.
Thank you, Joe.
On behalf of Auditor State, Keith Faber, I'd like to present the Auditor State Award with Distinction. Let me get rid of this here right now, in case somebody wants to take a picture. All right. There you go, congratulations.
Can you have him send that so we can put them?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds good. All right, Joe. Good to see you.
Thank you. Jeremy, congratulations.
Good job, Jeremy.
To you and your staff and everybody, really.
Right, and that's what I try to remind everyone, is that it's not just me that makes all that happen. Everyone who hears me harp about all the rules that we have to follow, this is why. I mean, we need to make sure that we're good stewards of money and it takes everyone following the rules to make that happen. So it's not just because I did it on my own. I have a great staff and our employees here and it worked out, so it's always fun to get a clean audit, for sure. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, now, I've been on the committee with you on that, what, now, five times? We've been through it?
Yep.
So, yeah, it's not easy to, you know, it's very, they look at everything, so, which is good. All right, moving along, we have Upper Valley Career Center, report, Mr. Height.
Short report. Our meeting last week was basically the same as our reorganization meeting. We renewed a lot of the same things that you did elected our new officers. We did have a presentation from the FCC LA students, and that means Family, Career, and Community Leadership of America, one of the student organizations at the Career Center. And the students were very complimentary of the skills that they've learned through that. The confidence that they get when they present to the public and that sort of thing and the things they've been doing for the school, so it was good to see. A biggest part of the school population there is involved in one or more of the student organizations there. So they highlighted the things that they have done, a lot of community awareness and personal growth that they gained through that program. So other than that, that's the report from the Career Center this week.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Height. Any comments, questions, anybody? Okay, I have nothing on hearing from the public, so we'll move along. Treasurers' Report, Mr. Hiddle.
Right, well, the first item on there is the audit report. As you just saw, the district received a clean audit, and so it's always fun to do that. I strive to make it happen annually, and we were able to make it happen again this year. The next thing on there is the mid-year fiscal review and update. So I did print out a copy so that you had a physical copy to look at. Of course, at this point, you run through there, you're hoping to see that your revenues are at 50% or higher and your expenses are 50% or lower, since we're midway through. So, real estate taxes, you're not going to see it exactly at 50% because a smaller amount comes in early and then a bigger amount comes in the second time. So that's exactly about where it should be. All the other revenue is coming in on track. You look at our expenses, everything is 50% or less, except in the capital or the supplies, and that's because we try to get the supplies ahead of time for the school year. So it's never going to run under 50% during this timeframe. So you look at the total expenditures, it's under 50% at 49%, just like our revenues at 49%. So we're right on track with where I expected us to be at this point in the year.
What's other objects?
So those, are you talking about expenditures?
Yeah.
Those could be any kind of random bills that we would get, consulting type of things, tax, we have to pay taxes and then get reimbursed for them. That also includes bills for the bank fees and things like that. So, and then we have to charge money for getting collections on auditor fees and income tax collections from the state of Ohio. So that's the other chunk of that.
It's miscellaneous.
It's, yeah, it's the 800 and 900 objects in the, and when you think about it, the accounting funds, and so it's the weird, random things. And the more you collect, the more they bill, like they get a percentage, meaning the county auditor's office and the state of Ohio when they're collecting taxes.
Moving on to Treasurers' Agenda.
Or any other questions about the monthly financial reports. Next item on there is to approve the payroll adjustments in accordance with PA contract and those reimbursements. This go-around were $5,435, and we have two individuals that are moving up a step to a master's degree, I believe both of them were. So those are the changes that we're approving tonight. And the next item on there is to approve the fund-to-fund transfer of money from the 002 Fund for the old Pickle Junior High School debt service to the debt service account for the new buildings. So as we've closed out and paid off the junior high, which we're going to celebrate later here this evening, we need to move that money from that account to another debt service account. In this case, because we have the debt service on the new buildings, that's where the auditor's office wanted it to go. And we have submitted this change in the tax budget as well, but this is just formalizing the move so that when the auditors come to check, that you knew what happened and you approved it. And that's it.
Do we have any questions, comments, any further? The agenda vote, any motions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. If agreeing, please say aye. If not, nay.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. This month, we will have Spring Creek Primary School that will be here to talk about the academic programs that they're doing at their school. Mr. Ross Lautenbeck will be the presenter.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to talk about, I think I just realized I put the wrong date on there. Tonight, we want to highlight some of the things that are happening at Spring Creek. As most of you know, we are all working on our success-bound push and focal points. So this here, you will see our new sign that was installed last Friday on the cafeteria wall, and within that, you will see all the components to success-bound that we're focusing on. So you're talking academics, K1, 2, and 3, and those just kind of build on each other. Those are the must-haves academically that each of those grade levels and those students need to have as they ascend to the next grade level. You'll see our good character pillars on there, you'll see our attendance, you'll see our social-emotional, and you'll be, also see behavior. So if you get a chance to stop out in the building, check it out, it's kind of a cool new addition. So just wanted to share that real quick. Next slide, we're going to talk more success-bound. This year, along with Washington, we implemented clubs. This is a really cool component to our building. If you get a chance again, every other Friday afternoon, we have clubs happening. What's cool about clubs is students had the opportunity early on in the year to select clubs of their interest, and also, you'll see here, teachers did too. So we, it was this long, kind of grueling process to get it all organized, but essentially, every student was able to get into one of their top three favorite clubs. And within those clubs, they are, and you can see here, snapshot of Mr. Bloom working with Mrs. Ashton and her robotic club. So that's just an example of one of the things we do. Some other clubs we have, we have a run club, we have, we call it the Spring Creek Salon Club, which is a very popular club, and teachers, a couple of teachers teach kids, or mainly girls, how to do their nails, how to take care of their hands. I was able to take some product homes, kind of nice. Many others. So again, if you get a chance to pop out, if you have questions, always ask, it's really neat. And again, it's just, it provides students high levels of engagement, it's very hands-on, they get a chance to work with peers that have similar interests. We're working and focusing on readiness skills, that's something that we're trying to get better at in year one, that's not a huge, heavy focus, but those things like collaboration and work ethic, again, that tie back to the high readiness skills, that also supports what the intermediate junior high and high school are doing. And again, it just allows teacher and student relationship building. So, kind of cool, if you get a chance to check it out, come out and see us. Some other good things that I want to highlight, that we don't talk about often in these meetings, is we, again, success-bound focus is, we really look on good character, we're focusing on packs, and our PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And again, the big six that we focus on in a building, and Washington does the same throughout the year, is respect, responsibility, kindness. And this month, we're working on trustworthiness, and we'll move on to fairness and citizenship before the year is out. Over here to the right in the pictures, something else that, one of my favorites is, we do positive office referrals in our building, so teachers, you can see the student over here who has the slip, it just is recognizing those students for demonstrating one of our three major pillars of respect, responsibility, kindness, they write it up, we make a big deal of it, we read it on the announcements each morning, and then those students' names go into a drawing, and then once a month, we draw six students and we have a lunch with the principal, we have Dairy Queen. So just something that recognizes the students for their hard work. So, kind of cool. And then specifically looking at academics, something that I am very proud of in our building this year, is we have really worked hard to fully implement the units of studies and the readers and writers workshops, so you can also see in these pictures, kids, books are in kids' hands. You have teachers on the floor conferring with kids, really getting to know where their students are academically, so that's another highlight in the building. Last but not least, our current focus in our work right now, we are very, very data-driven, which is what we should be doing. We're really looking at our tier-one instruction, we're doing a lot of building walks and trying to provide feedback to our staff on how we can better service and meet the needs of our students. Something that I've been talking heavily with my staff about, and the words that I've been putting out there, is being systemic and systematic, we're streamlined in our approach so that we can better, again, serve students and close those achievement gaps. TBT focus right now is, we're looking at that data, and then we're looking at our structures in our building, you know, specifically right now, we're looking at our guided reading groups and making sure in K through 3, all those guided reading groups are very structured in what we're doing and similar, so that, again, we can close those gaps. We're doing, we're really focusing on research-based strategies versus just activities, that's another heavy conversation in our building. We're using, we have built-in intervention blocks to help focus on root causes with students and provide specific interventions to their needs. And then we are really focusing on student engagement. And then lastly, we are, another, something that we battled for years is our chronic absenteeism, we're currently 16.38%, which is about 2% less than what we were at last year. If we can get that down to about 13.4%, we'll meet our state indicator, which is one of our goals. Our ultimate goal with attendance is try to get to 10% or less, but with the heavy focus that we have this year, I would take 13.4% to get that indicator, which is another something, another component that we're focusing on is to improve our report card. So those are the things that are happening at the creek currently. Let's see, do I have any questions?
You know, this week, I went out to each of the buildings, and I just wanted to say to the principals, and please relay to your staff, I was extremely impressed. I took Tuesday and I went out, everywhere I went, students were, they were engaged, working, they were moving around with purpose, nobody hanging around anywhere, teachers were busy, as you said, in all the buildings, they had the students engaged, they had them working, they were, even people who were walking from point A to point B, they were focused. You know, there were no, you know, going to Cincinnati through Toledo type things, you know, they were, they were going where they should have been. So I was extremely impressed, I really was, so compliment you and your staffs. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hard to believe we're at the time of the year where the high school program of studies will be voted on tonight, because they're actually going to start in registering here pretty soon. Mr. Bostick is going to come up and tell a little bit about some of the additions to the programming so that you guys are aware of that before you vote on that tonight.
So I think you guys have a copy already shared with you. We're just going to kind of highlight some of the things, if, I think it was the last board meeting or two board meetings ago, I talked about how some of the changes with the state, so it's kind of caused us to do a couple of things. We are excited that we're going to be offering Edison courses at Pickle High School, some more of them. We'll be doing English, Composition 1 and English Composition 2, those are Edison College Credit Plus courses. We currently have 40, I believe, 40-plus kids that are enrolled in those classes from the high school, and so we're bringing those 40-plus kids that would potentially go over to Edison, will be back in our building. We've, part of our media program, we've had to add, we've had so many kids take the classes, now we've had to add the final classes for the seniors. So we have an After Effects, which is for being able to go through and digital editing. We're, Edison medical terminology is being added, technically, it's already going on, we just had to put it into the coursebook. We're renaming our logistics lab to Mechatronics, we had to add another section of that. We're adding an Introduction to Healthcare class, that's a Career Center class. We are starting, I mentioned this to you guys before, we're going to have a pre-apprenticeship program for law enforcement, and we also have a pre-apprenticeship program for custodial maintenance, and these are all graduation pathways for kids. We're also adding a math, it's called quantitative reasoning, it's a fourth, senior-level math, it's an Edison course, it also will be an Algebra II equivalent. So this is a math for kids that are going into non-STEM careers. And then a new one, we are putting out there, we've got a, Scott worked on getting a curriculum together for us. We're looking into, it's called Launching Into Aviation, and it's a careers based in, well, aviation. So kids will be learning the basics of, I guess, I guess, a flight, but there's going to be working with, it's a STEM class, and eventually it will lead to where kids can, if we get really good with this, we could actually get their pilot's license through high school. So it's a pilot program. That's pretty good. That's pretty good.
Okay, Ross.
It's good. So those are the things that we're offering. I can go through, we have a couple of classes that have been deleted simply because we have to change the names to match up with our EMIS coding, so that's really what it is. So continuing our work with trying to do career development for our students, we're getting career exposure to our students.
When you talked last time, things were uncertain at the state level, has anything gotten locked down?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so we're still, this is where they're headed, though, it looks like?
Yes, that's, we are projecting some things. We do not have any hard data or anything telling us what this is what it's going to be, but we're going, we have to try to stay ahead of it, because when they come down with a decision, it's usually too late for us to act, so we just, we start trying to do things on our own. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the junior high, but Mr. Clark was not able to make it tonight, and he wanted to share a couple of things on that, so he'll do that at the next board meeting, okay? Next, after that, is just to mention the movie premiere of The Last Full Measure. It goes without saying how important I think this is to the community. Several dignitaries have arrived throughout the day to get ready for tomorrow's premiere, which will be a special Pickle premiere of the movie. We've got the writer, the director, some actors, several of the mud soldiers, we actually have a gentleman that was saved by William Pittsburgh on that day, who's the person that actually nominated him for the Medal of Honor and who's beginning writings about that event inspired the movie. It took 34 years for him to get the Medal of Honor, 20 years for this movie to take place. The perseverance for all the people that played into that is incredible, and that's really what the story is about. It's considered a war movie, you're going to see some war scenes in between that, but it's really about kind of the scandal that happened in Washington DC and why it took so long for him to receive the Medal of Honor. It's important that we recognize that because he's an alumni, and we still have a great generation here in town that remembers him as the person, more than, more than the hero. They remember playing with him and attending school with him and dating him and doing all those great things. They describe him as having a wonderful charismatic kind of personality and a great humor, and it's important, I think, for our students to know who he is and what he did, and for the community to celebrate that. A lot of people ask what The Last Full Measure means, it actually came from the Gettysburg Address, and it means that, that absolute devotion to the country and to other people, to the point where you give up your life willingly at all costs to protect and help and preserve other people, and that's exactly what he did. I don't want to give away the story, it's kind of like the Titanic where you know what happens at the end, but there are so many details that happened in there, but we'll play the movie trailer here real quick, and we just want to celebrate again this movie coming to town and the premiere tomorrow at 5:30 at the mall.
Operation Abilene was one of the bloodiest battles of the Vietnam War.
Everybody down!
Entire company nearly wiped out.
We are taking fire!
Prayed for miracle. One came, his name is Pitts.
Pitts saved lives. We put him up for the Medal of Honor.
But he never got the medal.
Justice delayed, is justice denied?
The Medal of Honor is the highest recognition of military valor there is. You prepare full decorations review.
Sir Pittsburgher, sir.
I'm from the Department of Defense.
I'm here to learn.
Your son.
If you want the real story, you'll need to talk to the mud soldiers.
I've never seen lost men like that. Pittsburgher comes down there, wire hives, saves man he never even knew.
Sounds like a suicide mission.
Suicide is hopeless. Pittsburgher did was valor.
He kept telling him to get out, but he wouldn't go.
He was there to save lives, and that's what he was doing.
Why are you here?
Because you're here.
Hell, he shouldn't even have been there.
None of us should.
What are you saying?
It's friendly fire. We're fighting our own men.
The after-action report is missing.
Who even thought up Operation Abilene in the first place?
It's not a can of worms you want open.
Why not?
Information was removed from the original review.
You have no idea what you're starting.
I have never seen you back off of anything.
Usually, we're judged by what we do, but what we don't do is what haunts us.
I'm going to go pummel with the story.
Sounds a little dangerous.
But it'll be great television.
Getting that medal for Pitts, for the man I lost, might be the only decent thing I pull out of that war.
Pittsburgher's father is dead.
Dying isn't harder than losing a child. Do what you can.
Guys like Pittsburgher do what they do for each other, life for a life.
I need to finish this.
Give praise to this young man that showed us that the sacrifices of the fallen will never be forgotten.
So again, amazing story, amazing cast. I've seen the movie, I recommend it, it's a very compelling story. So just again, wanted to celebrate the fact that one of our alumni is going to be on the big screen here, and it's going to tell a pretty significant story. Next, a celebration is that we have paid off the Pickle Junior High School. December 1st, I think, Jeremy, I sat next to him on the computer, we pushed that last button and paid off the junior high. We actually refinanced that bond and was able to pay it off in 19 years versus the 20-year debt that was issued. And in doing so, we saved $865,034, and now we have reduced taxes for the citizens by 1 mil. So it's a great thing for our community, and it's a great feeling to have that paid off. So we have the final bill here, and we're going to give that to our president, who is going to go over and shred it, and that's going to be the mortgage disappearing for our taxpayers.
Hopefully, not my favorite. You can have copies, Jeremy.
Yeah, we definitely have, we have the scanned version, yes.
Okay, here we go.
Wait, not that for him. All right, so it's done and paid for. Huge thank you to our taxpayers, because obviously, we could not have done that without them. Our next celebration is the fact that it is January and at January time, it is Board Appreciation Month, and this year, the theme is planting seeds for success. It goes without saying that you guys do quite a bit of that. You're very supportive of our work, you're very interested in it, ask a lot of good questions, you're very in tune to what we do, and we really appreciate everything that you do as a board member. Each of the You're very supportive of our work, you're very interested in it, ask a lot of good questions, you're very in tune to what we do, and we really appreciate everything that you do as a, as a board member. Each of the schools have a little something for you, and I do have certificates from the state, so I will lead the pack. If you want to follow behind me, I will give out certificates by the state, and each school then will give something to you as a celebration for the month.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, sir.
Follow it behind me if you would.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you guys. Okay. Thank you, Ross. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Wow. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ross. Thank you for all you guys do. Thank you, sir. Wow, thank you. My goodness. Hey, thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for all you do, Jay.
Thank you. Thank you much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Me? Yeah.
It's great.
They don't say nothing. You're fine down there.
Congratulations, you're the first.
You guys do the hard work.
Yep. It is. A lot of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't tell me that, no.
Right. Run to the car.
We do have one final video up here we want to share to, with you as well for the celebration for this month.
Planting Seeds. Presented by January 2020, the Pickle Board of Education, Washington and Spring Creek Primary Schools.
Going at trials like a flower, first you plant a seed like it's little baby.
Then the seed grows roots, which is like a young child going to elementary school. Next seed turns into a sprout, which is like a child going to PCIS. The next sprout grows taller and grows leaves, which is like a young student going to junior high school.
Tiny sprout of leaves grow a little faster, and now develops a flower, which is like a young adult going to high school. The flower is completely developed now, just like the adult entering the world. Flower needed a few things to grow so tall and healthy. It needed water, air, soil, and sunlight. The child needed a few things to grow too. The children get what they need from the Board of Education. Without the Board of Education, the children would not get what they need to grow, and you got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you.
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 So thank you very much for everything that you do to support our work. I think they were going to have Rob on the video, but they wanted to keep it cute, so they didn't let Rob in.
Well, I just have to say, we appreciate everybody in this room because, you know, you guys are actually the ones that are out there doing what needs to be done. So we just are here to help facilitate it. So thank you guys for being so awesome in our community and making a big difference.
And remember, I'm just the old retired board member that can come into the schools. These folks work, so.
Yeah, some of us still have jobs.
Yes, there you go. So I'm the one that gets to come in, but, but they are totally, you know, it's all five of us. You guys are awesome. We're very blessed to have all of you. Thank you.
Thanks. Under other, I would just ask if Mr. Bloom could come up and tell us a little bit about the schedule change for the test and why that, and then we'll vote on that, so.
For the state test. So every year, we are, we have to find some way to schedule for the state testing in the high school that's coming up. That will start in roughly two months, around in March. The easiest way for us to do that is to utilize, utilize a two-hour delay schedule. What that does is it allows us to have those students test without interruption at the high school, and then have the rest of the students come on the two-hour delay schedule. Because of the way that the state testing falls, we take, it takes multiple days in which to do this, and those are listed here in the agenda. So we've done this in the past. It works best in the morning. The students are fresher, they're ready to test, and we can accommodate students who might need extended time or who are running late, anything like that. So you'll see that in your agenda. Thank you.
So are those all accounted for, you know, at the beginning of the year or when the calendar comes out?
Yeah.
It's nothing, no surprise.
Right. This is every, we do this every year. Have to have some way to test the students.
Takes an enormous amount of time to test. So under my agenda, I would like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations and grants. Number of donations came in through, for the show choir events that happened. Recommend the board approval for the Pickle High School 2020-2021 Program of Studies that Mr. Messick talked about. We're going to skip three for the junior high because Mr. Clark's going to cover that at the next meeting. And then, this is what Mr. Bloom just talked about, to recommend the board approval of the two-hour delay for the Pickle High School for the purpose of Spring 2020 air testing on the following dates, April 14th, 15th, 21st, 22nd, 28th, 29th, and May 5th and 6th of 2020. Recommend board approval of the attached list of textbooks for disposal and removal from the inventory of the Pickle City School District. And that concludes that. It's, I want to go to a vote.
Okay. Well, we have, any comments, questions? Okay, may I have a motion to the superintendent's?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, that passes. So moving on to personnel agenda, Mr. Lyons.
Pretty, pretty quick personnel agenda. The only thing that I would add, you see, we added a sub, substitute teacher in there. One of the things that changed from the ESE is that they're able now to approve substitute addendums in lieu of board meetings, much like our superintendent's able to make approvals on personnel. That gives us the flexibility with making quicker approvals for substitute teachers, and we were able to get one on there in that process, and you see her on there tonight. So outside of that, that process, if you're interested in subbing, you have to have a bachelor's degree, and then we interview you and make some decisions on whether or not we can get you into the school. So anybody interested in subbing, we could always use some additional people. So outside of that, I have nothing additional to add for the personnel agenda.
Okay. Questions, comments, anyone? Okay. To approve the personnel agenda?
So moved. Second.
Aye, if you agree.
Aye.
Okay. No nays, so that's true. Have no old business? No new business?
There is new business.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is, I just had to turn my page, I'm sorry.
This is the first read of an update to a policy that you approved previously in the year, but there was some numbers that did not match our board, other board policies. So this is just updating those numbers within the board policy.
No hearing of the public non-agenda items? Well, the next board, the next regular board meeting will be February 27, 2020 at 6:00 PM. So any comments, questions? Okay, may we entertain motions for adjournment?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting is adjourned.